Chair. I don't make no warranties, it's how well it works.
Seven o'clock. Thank you all for coming, calling the Enfield Budget Committee meeting. The order. Well, call the meeting, so I can forward to order. Okay. Before we begin, I'm going to go through the whole presentation. Everybody should have a printed copy because I can imagine it's pretty hard to see from the back. I will add, ask Ed to do his magic again, and he made that print thing bigger, maybe we can do that again. Once I go through the whole presentation, when the public comment opens up, please stand clearly state your name so that we can have the minutes. And then you have three minutes to make your comments. Second rounds of comments are allowed only once all the people who wants to make their first comment have made their first comments. Alright, so thanks all for coming. This is the Enfield Budget Committee 2025 municipal budget proposal. Before I begin with lots of fun numbers, I wanted to cover some terminology because it may be very common for us to have these terms, but for others it may not. And I want to make distinctions between budgets and tax rates and revenues and all these other things. So there's really two categories of expenses. There's the general government operating expenses and there's the capital improvement program. The general government is about the yearly spending to go through every calendar year of your expenses, while the capital improvement program is more focused long term and to replace high cost equipment. We also have other funds in our in our budget. Those are, for example, the water and sewer fund as well as the TIF. Those really don't impact the property tax rate because they have revenues from their own sources. So I want to make that clear. I frequently hear in the public say, you know, why should I have to pay for the replacement of a water line from, you know, I'm not even on the water system. Well, you don't. Revenues, so expenses are where the money goes out, revenues is where the money comes in. Property taxes are revenue, but it's not the only revenue the town has. We collect funding from the state and the federal government, such as rooms and meals tax, FEMA and other things. Registration fees, licenses, youth sports, all those things are revenues. Technically, even water rates are revenues. And that's what I meant with the water revenues are offsetting the water expenses and it becomes a zero net sum and therefore it doesn't impact property taxes. So property taxes are actually not set by the town. They are set by the state, by the Department of Revenue Administration located in Concord. And essentially the way they compute it is they look at the difference between expenses and revenues and the rest is property tax. So the more revenue the town has, the less property tax the town pays has to collect. That tax is then divided by the total town assessed value and that's how you get a tax rate. This is also why at the town meeting I said it's very dangerous to compare tax rates because it depends on the assessed values. And if you compare your own town's assessed value to your neighboring town's assessed value, you may be on different cycles. And that just completely messes up the rates. So the tax rate is also not just a town tax. There's town tax, county tax, local school tax, and then state education tax. Revaluation happens every five years. So as we all know, we went through one now. I'm sure everybody noticed their valuations going up a lot. They have some data about that in the next couple of minutes. A revale, an increase in value of your property does not mean that you pay more taxes. A revaluation is simply aimed every five years to reset everybody's property value to the true market value at that point in time. If nothing else is changing, meaning your revenues are the same, your budgets are the same. If your value increases more than the average, you're going to pay more property taxes. If your value increases less than the average, you're going to pay less profit tax. You'll see that come in. I did some statistics. You'll see that come in when I look at the impact on people's tax rates for this year. This is really key. There's actually a lot of people where their taxes went down. Yeah, having said all this. So I assume everybody here was at the town meeting. And you may remember Timmy standing on the podium saying, I'm going to make a tax prediction. And so if you look back at that presentation, the predicted taxes was 6.27% increase. The actual taxes ended up being 6.57, quite close. And that's the 6.57 is when you normalize it by the valuation because yes, you probably noticed our tax rate actually went down. Because the values went up, but it doesn't mean your bill went down. So what I did was I imagined the valuation doesn't happen. What would have happened to the taxes? They would have gone up 6.57%. So I looked a little closer. It actually turned out the county and school rates were much higher of increases than I predicted. Like almost double. And then the state education rate actually went down. And the town tax rate, we had predicted 13% and actually went up by less than eight. And so I realized I was quite lucky to be so close to the predicted. But what essentially happened is some numbers went up, some numbers went down. The average kind of stayed the same. And so I will make my prediction again this year. And I think for the same reason, that is what we're going to assume in my household is going to be the increase because it's going to be unlikely that all the numbers are going to be off high or low. If things change, it's going to be something goes up, something else goes down. Okay, so you may say, well, you were close in the tax predictions, but that's not what happened to my bill. That is because of the revaluation. So I, this is a chart that's hard to see. I hope you can better see it on your slides. But I essentially collected data from the town. Everybody's, every lot's tax bill. So every tax lot, I went, everybody's tax bill. And I looked at how much those bills increased year over year. And so if you look at that, I realized 26% of the bills actually went down. If you then look at the median, which is a number. The median is a number where half the people have a change that is less. And half the people have a change that's more. The median was $248, which means half the people saw their bill increase by more than $248 and half the people saw their bill increase by less than $248. 20% of the bills increased by more than a thousandth. So those are the people who saw bigger changes in their value. Their, their property value rose more than the average of their, you know, neighbors. But that also includes new construction. Because when I look at this lot, went from, say, $1,000 to $5,000. That's all I have. It could have been, there was no house on it and they built a house on it. It will go up, so it includes new construction. And so this widespread you see is typically in revaluation because everybody's valuation is being shifted around. So if you now look at a year with no valuation. Oops, too fast. Let's see how the peak is much tighter. So this was valuation, Broad Mountain. No revaluation. Reason for that is there's no revaluation. People's property taxes are still changing, but not a lot relative to each other. So the increases are much more narrow. Which means this year it's probably going to look more like this. You're not going to see 26% of people who see their tax bills go down because there's no change in the valuation, other than if you tear your house down, for example. So all that said. Reminder of last year. So last year, we had a big increase in the operating expenses. The increases were mainly due to the two building loans, right? That everybody approved what? Three years or three years ago? Three years ago. So, and we knew that was going to hit with a delay because once you approve, that doesn't mean you start paying. You have to get a loan first and all that. And then also we saw a significant increase in benefits. Costs, we also saw increases and I'm sure everybody remembers me talking about Casella changing their recycling cost. I'm sure everybody remembers the heated discussion about the last in this room a year, more than a year ago. So we saw 13% increase. So to to lighten that blow, the decision was made, and it was not unanimous, to use essentially money in the bank to lower the tax rate. And so we liquidated some funds and funds that were laying around, was 114,000. And then we also used fund balance for total of actually closer to 3, 300, 350. And that impact was we essentially lowered tax rate by $400,000, just using essentially cash, not real cash, but money in the bank. That meant that we reduced tax rates by 2.3%. So some of you may hopefully remember, Timmy started the podium and then also reminded people that next year, even if the operating budget increases by zero, the taxes to be collected will increase by 400,000 because we can't keep pulling 400,000 out of the bank account. It's just a reminder. Okay, inflation history. So we had a really sharp year. Everybody knows the high inflation, two years ago, a drop, it went up a tiny bit. It's three and a half percent and we look at July to July. So now budgeting process. Same as before, our manager works with departments, says and presents a proposed budget. The budget committee then reviews the budgets. And then the goal we had this year is the same as it always been. We want to maintain core services, maintain quality of life. We want to maintain the staffing that we have in time. We want to present a responsible budget and look for efficiencies. We found some of those, as we will discuss. That's essentially repeating, we want to maintain staffing levels. We didn't add in positions and we want to maintain current services. As a reminder, remember that not all the expenses are paid for by property taxes. There are revenues that offset the expenses, including water, sewer, youth force, and something actually community nursing is on the expense side too this year, but it's been fully funded for two years.
We have enough money for that, but yeah, we have enough money to put revenue in this year's budget to fully offset it.
So we essentially, I think it was donations or they collected money and so it doesn't cost taxpayers anything for at least two years. So on the labor and benefit side, so also last year to lighten the impact on the taxes, the police department decided, hey, you know, we can fully staff, but let's not plan to fully staff. And so they cut a half of police officer and half a police assistant out for 2024. Essentially by delaying hiring, while those people are now hired, so they're now a whole year, so those come back. Maybe there's a minor increase in wages for seasonal workers, those lifeguards, summer camps, things like that, mainly to fill positions. We actually have a budget for lifeguards, but as you probably noticed, there has not been a single lifeguard at the beach last year because simply people were making more money going to McDonald's. So we are also, as you heard last year, we had a wage, we did a compensation study. We started the implementation of that last year. This is the second year, we decided to spread it out again to impact, limit the impact on people's taxes. And so this is the second year and also the majority of the impact of the compensation study will be implemented this year. We surveyed nearby towns. They were seeing pay adjustments in the two to six percent range, the average being four and a half. We are slightly above that when you take into account the fact that we're bringing the police department back to full staffing and we have pay adjustments for seasonal workers. The good news is that with the help of Brad Rich, we looked at benefits. And so the town changed health insurance providers. And so the total benefits cost has decreased by 5%. So that is offsetting the wage increases. Operating cost is essentially flat. The increase is 0.3%. I listed essentially the few items that were over $10,000 and there's not that many. One negative one that disappears is the Shetland work because it's a temporary project that is wrapping up. There's only $5,000 remaining work left for monitoring for 2025, but most of the work is completed. There's a decrease for the cable access channel funding. We are essentially planning to just offset the cost there for outfitting Whitney Hall. Because most of our meetings are streamed on YouTube now. As I believe is this one. And then we have an increase in Lebanon landfill costs. So Lebanon landfill has increased the rates. We expect an increase in costs. And then we have an increase in finance too for plant software upgrades because we're having increasingly more problems with our finance software situation. At the end of the day, with all the changes, the budget essentially only increased by, is that what, $9,000 out of 2.7 million? Yes. And then that service is unchanged. I will keep the two loans on here to remind people. You know, the conditions for the two buildings. So we have a 20-year loan at 3.15% for the public safety building. And then we have a 20-year loan with 4% rate for the Whitney Hall renovation and expansion. And as people know, the Whitney Hall project is pretty much complete and the public safety building is meeting the purpose. So cost reductions, as I mentioned, health insurance in 2024. So we saw a big increase from 2023 to 2024. And then from 24 to 25, we actually saw a decrease of $115,000 because of changes in the health insurance provider. The town also continues to look for grants. So they applied for a large amount of grants, but I'll talk about that in a second. The, the fact that only $225,000 was awarded out of 2.96 million isn't simply because there was a $2.7 million grant that we applied for and that did not get awarded. That, based on my understanding tonight, and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong. We're actually going to, we're actually going to reapply for that, but not as much because the pool of money that was available was not as high as we thought. And so we were asking for too much. And so the plan is to reapply for that grant in the amount of $900,000.
970,000.
$970,000 to increase our odds of getting that grant. So put it all together. So if you look at 2023, the total general fund expenses were 6.6 million and you saw that big jump to 2024 of 7.5. So that's what lost a much greater attendance last year. This year it's going from the 7.55 million to 7.67 million. That is a 1.6% increase. And so that's mainly because the salaries and wages increased 7%. That doesn't mean that people get a 7% raise, that just means the total profit salary and wages increased 7%. Benefits went down by, you know, five and then operating cost and debt service roughly stayed the same. So total, all expenses increased 1.6% for the general fund. Here's a chart, shows the same thing. So it's been, had been trending up. And then the, the rate of increase had been trending up. The two peaks were where the loans kicked in and we had high inflation. And then this year the increase is only 1.6%. Okay. General fund, unassigned fund balance. So as some of you know, this is a chart I've been presenting now, or the town has been presenting for like four or five years, probably even longer. It started in Eric's days. And so we eroded our savings in the 2012 to 2015 range and started recovering that. It was recovered by, before the pandemic essentially in 2020 and has stayed relatively flat. Which essentially means that the mind of money we use of fund balance and the surpluses we have are kind of leveling out. The 2023 and 2024 numbers are un-audited. If by town meeting, the 23 numbers is fully available in the audit report, I will update that little dot in 2023. And so the reason why we don't see change from 23 to 24 is because, remember, we used $300,000 from fund balance. So if we didn't actually have a surplus of 320, we would have seen the fund balance go down by $300,000. So the fact that we have a surplus actually means we're only seeing a decrease of about 16,000, which is much better than I had anticipated. So on that note, surplus. So I don't remember when in the year, but I think like relatively early in the year, in April. There was an unanticipated bond, bond payments that we had to pay. And that called the town to realize, oh, we got to do some cost savings efforts. And so all the departments essentially started scaling back their expenses. And then as a result, personnel under, had an under run of 180, operating had an under run of 300,000. The combined effect is an under run and those two areas of close to, I should have put the sum on my page, but 480, you subtract the debt overrun of 170 and you get to a surplus of 320. So thanks to the town for tightening the belt and actually overshooting on your surplus so that the, of the spending of last year's fund balance is actually nicely wiped out. I'll go back here and one thing, so you see the blue line is flat because we're kind of leveling out, but the dotted line is below it is going up. Well, that is because the policy is you want to be above at least 8% of your total operating expenses. But that is slowly increasing. So your fund balance really needs to be rising with it. So even though several years ago we were closer to the solid green line, which is the target. We're now trending for the bottom dotted line because it actually stays level. Then we're to your checking account, right? Like $5,000 10 years ago was all maybe a lot, but now it's not so much. So expenses, so you heard me talk earlier, so we have the general government, which is the top line item, that one is going up 1.6%. Okay, however, there are other expenses. There's a water budget. That is going down by three. The sewer budget that is going up by 2.6. There's capital projects that staying the same and then they're stiff. Those are all expenses. Right? But not all of them get funded by property. It's because we have revenue coming in from water rates and sewer rates. So there's also capital, CIP, in the bottom. And so there's appropriations there. Right, and to that fund. So at the end of the day, even though you're going to see numbers in the warrant article that don't match the 7.6, the warrant article is for the 9.463. But that doesn't mean 9.463 is coming from the tax, property taxes. It's just the way the government works. So moral of the story is, the whole money that the town has to, the money is going to go out. Right, is 10.02 million. That's a 0.1% decrease actually. So that 10.0 million gets offset by revenues. On the next slide. So we have revenue. Even though we saw an increase from 23 to 24, we are concerned that less money will come from the state. And so we are budgeting a little bit more conservatively on the state sources. And that's why you see it going down from 670 to 530. And then if, when we assessed, you know, we, we saw small, we'll do small increase in the licenses. If people buy more new cars, that number will go up, right? So if you want more revenue, go buy a new car. I don't recommend that for your personal budget. And so there's grants in there, but you can't really predict what grants you're going to get. Right, if there's a big storm, you may have an expense and FEMA may reimburse that, but you don't really know that. So we essentially have to estimate our revenues. Okay. So on that note, the government, the state doesn't set the tax rate until November. Okay, the first bill you pay is us just estimating. And we're essentially making a prepayment on the tax bill in June, July. The state doesn't set the tax rate until November. And by November, we have a pretty good idea what the revenues are. Which means if we exceed our estimated revenues, your taxes will be lower. Makes sense? So the town tax events. Well, if you not take that 10 million, right? It says your inter-operating transfers, that's essentially all the money that we expect to come in from thing from, you know, TIF, capital, water, sewer, all that stuff. Do not end up at 8.2. Well, that 8.2 gets reduced further by the fact that we're going to have revenues. Licenses, fees, federal, states, things like that. So, so that becomes like sticks. There's a thing we call overlay, there's more service credits you have to add back in. So the total taxes to be collected is 6.273 million. See that number? Okay, if you look at last year, it was 6.025 million. So that's going up 4%. Okay? Except last year we used cash to lower the taxes to be collected from 6 million to 5.573. Right? Which now means we have to collect $699,000 more. That's not because we're spending 699,000 to have it somewhere. That's because last year we used a whole bunch of money from savings. And so if you actually look at how much more we're spending, it's like 80,000. Upline, like appropriations, all sources minus inter-operating, it's 80,000. And that number gets bigger because our revenues are going down. So if our revenues come out better, less taxes. But we're thinking our revenues will actually go down, which means you have to fill the gap with taxes. So that's what I want to make is that, you know, the budget is essentially almost flat, it's increasing 1%. If you look at all, everything, it's increasing 1%. But the money to be collected from taxes is going up 12, simply because we expect less revenue and we're not using cash in the account, lower the tax rate. So that will be the difficult message at a meeting. But Timmy will be his best reminder, reminding people, we warned you last year. So I will also again go on the land and say, okay, that does not mean your taxes are going to go up 12.5%. It's the town portion that will go up 12.5%. And again, if we improve our revenue or if the value of the town goes up, that number comes out, like that 12.5 is if nobody makes any changes to their property values. There's no building, there's no chains. So if the town's value goes up because there's more houses built, your piece of the pie gets a little bit smaller and the tax rate goes down. So I estimated county and state education, again at the cola numbers, just like I did last year. It'll be interesting to see if county again is much higher and state education is lower, but that's what I'm doing. I estimated school. I estimated school at the percentage increase that is based on the public hearing last week.
Seven.
That is the whole district though. That doesn't mean Enfield's portion is gonna go up one point nine percent. In fact, uh, last year. The whole district's number was three point two percent. And Enfield saw a seven percent increase. So this is again. Estimated. So. If I do the math, I come to five and a half. So your your tax bill would go up five and a half percent because there's no revaluation. That means the histogram is gonna be very tight. And everybody's tax bill is gonna go up. Five and a half percent. Is it gonna be two? No. Is it gonna be ten? No. Because for it to be ten, all the numbers would have to double. Not happening. For it to be two, all the numbers would have to be cut in half. Not happening. So. I'm gonna assume five and a half. If I come, if next year is it's five point seven, I'm gonna feel pretty good, but it's probably not going to be based on the variability. Something is gonna go up, something is gonna go down. Okay, so. I'm continuing this chart, so. This is why I recommend people don't look at tax rate, because if you look at tax rate, you would think that, hey, everybody's tax bills went down. Not how it works. Um, so. The valuation in the actually increased seventy one percent. Um, and so the rate went down a lot, but that's because the valuation's gone up. Um, so. The expected town tax rate is gonna increase to six point oh nine. There's no revaluation, so that number's not gonna be massively different. Uh, that's a result of an increase in appropriations of eighty. A reduction in revenue of um one hundred and sixty five. An increase in war service credits of two thousand four hundred. And then a no longer using a fund balance of four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. So. What that means is, oh, what am I checked though? Oh, I I hit it twice. So what it means is. So. The increase from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. If I just take the reduction in revenue and the fact we don't use fund balance. That accounts for eighty eight percent of the change. Those two things alone. So. It's not really that we're spending more this year. It's just that. We expect it to be a little less budget than last year. We used a lot of cash. And it may not have looked as much, but it was like, hey, we'll. We'll do some project, some one time projects using. Money in the bank and we'll use a little bit of money in the bank to offset the tax rate and we have these other funds. Let's eliminate those and we'll reduce the C I P appropriations. And if you add it all together, it's almost a half a million dollars. So. Um, this is a proposed warrant, not voted on yet, but it would be to appropriate uh the nine point four six million. And that again is not the general fund that includes the general fund, water funds. Sewer, TIF. All of those combined. And then there's the article for C I P. Those two together make that ten point zero million. Again, that doesn't mean that we're gonna collect ten point zero million in taxes because you have to subtract all the revenues out. Alright, that was it in a nutshell.
Well done.
So.
Well done.
Yeah. Really well done. Questions?
Do you have the appropriate time for a budget committee or you want to probably carry it through? Or? Or for?
It sounds.
Public. Yeah, let's do public first, but then if they decide they wanna leave, they can.
Okay.
Um, we have a lot of people online. We'll start in the room. Uh, anybody have any questions, comments? Want to share? Anybody online? No public comment at all?
He didn't.
You answered the questions before they could ask them.
It looks like Sharon's hand is up. This is Lindsay. I don't know if you can hear me, but it looks like Sharon's hand is up.
We can, we can hear you.
Okay, I don't have a question. It looks like Sharon Bofay's hand is up, so I don't know. There's a little uh from, I'm online, so maybe she has a comment.
Yeah, it it's not showing here, but if she. Can she unmute herself or not? Yeah. So if Sharon has any comments to make, she can unmute herself and speak.
It's not.
Yeah. Well.
I'll be a little.
This is one for the record.
But still have date.
Alright.
Still have date.
So um can you turn to slide twenty? Which is the uh.
Yeah. That's like twenty.
Um. The one with estimated town tax. It's twelve point five percent.
What page do you have?
This one, that's twenty three.
Page, easy page.
Twelve.
It's pretty varied in the slides over the course of the time. Um, the bottom. Point the last cell and that's the um, the last few cells in that uh um. Spreadsheet, um, twelve point five percent estimated town tax rate of about uh um seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that's superimposed on uh another forty percent. Um, and uh um about a million dollars more since twenty twenty. If you go to the M S seven thirty sevens over the last. Um, years that since twenty twenty. Um, my concern is that that's just too much to try and sell to taxpayers. And that it has impact on the uh um affordability of this town for um both. The people who are not independently wealthy, um, uh fixed income. Workforce, um, and uh um we're not looking to to build luxury uh condominium structures uh up up on the on the the ridge. Um, and and my concern is that this sort of thing, if we continue that, we'll do that. So I can put for this.
Okay, thanks for your comment. Any other comments from the public or anybody else? Can you say your name so she has it put in?
Alright, my name is Wade.
Um, I have a question on slide nineteen.
Yep.
In three eighteen, you got that roughly. Six hundred thousand in the bank and then in twenty twenty. You went up a million. And then it stayed low. You guys like have an interest you're gaining or how did you gain a million in? In two years?
Um, I believe if you look back at those years, so we had a lot of understaffing. Meaning we had open positions that were unfilled. And so you budget for full staffing and then if you can't actually fill those roles because. You know, people take jobs in Lebanon because it pays better than that money goes and spend and it rolls into fund balance.
You gain interest on your.
No.
One point four million that you have in the bank?
No. A tiny bit, but not much, right?
Yeah, there's some, there's some rules that keep us from investing like normal people would, best at the end. In stuff that gets us very small interests. And so.
Yeah, so we can actually. If you pull up the presentations for those years, which are on the website. Um, it gives you, if you go to slide. Twenty, that presentate, that that slide essentially exists every year and it goes through. Okay, we have a surplus. Where does it come from? And so um you'll see in those years, it was probably an Eric was. Was like seventy percent came from unfilled positions or more. And so when you then look at slide. Uh, sixteen. If your wages are like half your budget. And you have like handful of positions open. That money doesn't go and spend. And then it's not even that. It's your wages and your benefits. So if you have a position unfilled, you're under running your wages, but you're also under running your benefit spending because those people don't have insurance and. Bike and all that. And so we're because the town is half, half the cost, half the operating costs are people. And so if you're not fully staffed. I don't know, back then it was like four or five positions open. You would just under run that by a significant portion and then that rolls into the undesigned native fund. Right? This year, we're much closer to full staffing. Um, and so. The the reason we. I don't know how the belt tightening actually worked that well because we are pretty close to fully staffed, right?
Yeah, we held some positions open on purpose. We had a grounds person leave and we purposely did not fill that for many months. Uh, we just did those training, whole bunch of things to to try to pull back and like you said, when we. When we didn't have. Some of those positions and money. Um. You know, the police officers, we cut their wages back, but we didn't pull the benefits and everything out of there, which looking at this year, I'm glad we did not do that. Again, so it's such a big part of your.
Long story short, well, a lot of it was unfilled positions, not all, but but a lot of it was unfilled position.
I don't know if it's too much. Um, can you do?
Yeah.
So.
We have a hot mic.
Mm hmm. Somebody turn my.
Well.
So I would just like to say and to be on the record for, because everyone knows that I'm not always a big proponent and happy and. Cheering on the budget um outcome, but I have to say this year. Um, I feel like it is the very best that we can possibly do. Given the circumstances and I feel like the big impact is our own choices that we made last year. And I feel like if you look strictly at the budget and see what that um increase is. I I really don't know how you can, I keep saying squeeze that nickel more and. I'm for one that people know that um, I mean, for me to be saying this, I'm telling you that it's not um, this is not um. Something I usually do. So um I have to say, I think the job well done and I think we've done the very best we can and. Um. I I would challenge anyone to come up with ideas and creative things that you think can be done. Um, to leave things as they are and not um. Unravel everything.
The last uh meet meeting before these hearings, um, I did bring up some. I realized that most of those would have required. Uh, select word approval as well, but there were several that I suggested um that uh were, that didn't even get a second to to get discussion.
I was curious, you said you did a of benefits and whatever analysis um. Was comparatively around. How do the costs of. Salaries with a, you know, similar town structure, how do they compare with ours?
Salaries, we did a compensation study a couple of years ago and we we aimed for kind of that average of the thirteen, I think it was thirteen pounds that. That we went, but we looked at. You know, Hanover, Lebanon, sounded be a few other ones around here. We sent them all across the state. They came back and then we shot for the middle and we were. We were down a little bit on most positions. We weren't too far down, but there were, there were a handful or more that were. Really significantly lower than other towns, but.
Good, I believe the.
Overall, I think we were within two percent.
Within one percent, actually. Of the compensation study when you looked at all of it combined. I believe it was one point something that we were off. So and we're never gonna compete with Hanover. Everybody knows that. Um.
Lebanon's worse now.
Lebanon's worse now.
Hanovers complained to me, can't keep up.
Right.
So.
It's when people. Y'all take a job in Canaan that we worry the most. And it happens.
We've had a few of those, yeah.
Dimitri, I just wanna also say what everybody else has said. You did first and foremost a phenomenal job. Uh, we've been working on this for six months. Second of all, I wanna recognize David's comments. I think they're very, very valuable and we should never stop listening to them. Uh, David, I do respectfully disagree, however. Um, I think our increase of one point six percent is very reasonable. And to go beyond that, we would have to start cutting services in the town. And we've made a conscious decision not to do that. I'm almost as frugal as Jane. Um, and I think we did a a a pretty good job here. Um, we did listen to your suggestions at the last meeting. Um, we did not get a second because people did not support them. I think they were. Good suggestions to make, um, but at this time, I'll speak to only to myself. I could not support those because I thought it was not in line with where we want to go as a town. But thank you for bringing everything.
Other comments? Do we recommend articles? Unless it's like board anything? No? Alright.
Accept the budget as criticism.
Hmm, well.
I.
We're gonna run through the articles.
I'm gonna say for the select board, none of the articles changed, but anyway. But you get that.
So I'm gonna start with article six. I'm not gonna read the entire article. I. Like to say, I make a motion to recommend article six as printed.
Have a second?
For the audience, we'll at least say what the purpose of the.
Yeah.
No, we're free to read it if we want to read it.
See a rule.
We probably should explain it a little bit.
Alright, so my my plan is as follows.
I I electronically, yeah, but at least if we stop that.
So. Yeah, we'll project them on the screen, but my plan is.
People that have Jim's phone that up.
Yeah, yeah. So my plan is this, we'll get the article recommended. We'll have somebody second, we'll open it for discussion, then we'll explain what the articles are.
You wanna stop sharing?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
And we didn't talk about a lot of these articles at all.
Right, so there's gonna be discussion, trust me. So it's not like we came all prepared to talk about these articles. It's going to be, we'll open it for discussion. Some of these are new for the budget committee too, so we'll then explain what it's about and Ed will do that. So.
Well, then.
Yeah, let's do that.
So I make a motion to recommend article six as printed.
I'll second that.
Alright, um, so discussion article six. Um. So article six is about a two point seven five million dollar water municipal improvement.
Just just in order, can the audience? Remote audience see what those articles are?
We don't, we don't have it on this computer anyway. I can probably email it to you.
Was it in our email though? I'm thinking if it's in our email, then.
I think I did email it to you.
I can project it for you. That I can give you a second.
And Dimitri should have it.
And so we'll have Ed explain what the article is about. And then the budget committee can discuss it before they go and vote on.
You have questions on this one? Jim's here as well, but um. We're asking for a two point seven five million dollar um. S R F loan, which is a state revolving fund loan. It's federal money that comes through the state. Um, to. To add a municipal well that we've been working on with a pump house and to start replacing some of our nineteen oh three water lines. Or a second phase of replacement of those really old water lines that we've been having issues and problems with. Um, the preapproval of this does come with a. Up to and probably a fifty percent. Of loan forgiveness, so it's kind of a fifty fifty grant if you think about it that way, but then it also. Part of this money is two hundred thousand dollars for lead replacement of water lines, lead water lines as we run across them and lead gooseneck, so that money will help. Supplement that. Um, it will not come out of taxes. It goes into the the water fund for water grid users, so it's not a a tax increase on that, but it is a. A large amount of money, but it comes with large forgiveness and it's a project that we do need to get that.
And then the the nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars is also associated to this.
It's part of that two point seven five, so we wanna go forward and get this. Of course, as you see, grants aren't. A hundred percent that we'll get them, but. If we do get it, there, nothing in this authorization says that, that we have to borrow that full.
And what's the period of time in which we have to pay back the two point seven five or some percentage there?
Are they normally twenty year, you know, SRF loans?
That you could get five, ten, fifteen and twenty, twenty is about three percent and five is like two percent. But yeah, we would go for twenty just to spread it out.
Okay, thank you.
I will tell you, SRF loans are really weird, that you, you apply for them, you get them, you spend them. And then they close the loan and give you all your terms, but don't give them to you ahead of time, you get the interest rate and everything after the loan is done.
True, if we took the worst case scenario that SRS did not give us the fifty percent, I know it's not gonna happen, but let's just assume it did for a second, it's a twenty year loan. What's the impact per um household of people that are having to pay for this?
I don't know what that is, can you?
I don't have that, but I, I, I can give you, it would take me a minute to pull that together, but I, I can certainly get that answered.
Get us that before we vote on?
I don't think so, no, no, again, I don't know exactly what the.
So, at least before town meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have a question, so if we vote to pass this. And we don't get the loan, can you decide not to do the project?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, this just gives us authorization to take a loan up to that amount, we don't have to take the loan and we don't have to take it to here, we've had multiple. Articles over the last couple of years where we found other ways to fund things and we. And we actually rescinded the authorization.
But I just want to make a comment on, on your question, where he can calculate the impact on water bills. But what's really hard to calculate is the cost that you don't incur because you do this work. Like the three water main breaks we had in the last week, you have a lot fewer of those when you maintain your equipment. And that's much more difficult and estimate over the next twenty years, if you were to not do the work.
And now the people that are paying the, for the water, are they having to pay for those repairs?
Yes, yeah, yeah, all of that goes through the water.
Yes, that's my gift to the town.
So, all of ours.
So, so here, long story short, you get this authorization, you go apply for the loan. If you don't get it, you could decide, we're just not gonna do it, and we're gonna apply for the loan next year.
And so we could also do it if we apply and they say, okay, we're gonna give you the loan with ten percent forgiveness.
Then we might say it's not worth it.
Yeah, we'll come back to the select board and have some discussions on, is this what we want to do, is it not what we want to do? The other thing to think about, like everything else, is costs don't go down.
Yeah.
Am I correct in this?
But we have gotten a preapproval for fifty percent forgiveness, which is. Pretty likely, but I don't want to guarantee it, but the state has said, this is what we're planning on giving you.
Okay, so.
Isn't it true that if you don't do this, then you can't apply for the grant, it's, right?
No, we can apply for the grant, the grant's a congressional direct vending grant, but. It's not a hundred percent here, and we can see him and.
But if you don't do this, the state piece doesn't.
So to, because Dan will probably think this, one thing you have to be careful of is. If the state preapproved this, if you decide to scale the project back. To make the impact less, to spread it over more years, the state may lo- longer approve it because you're changing the scope of the work.
So we did preapply, I think that's an important one, we preapplied last year.
Yeah.
And the state ranked us tenth out of a hundred and something projects and they usually fund like eighteen, so we're. Pretty solid, you're gonna get it and the preapproval came with fifty percent forgiveness and a two hundred thousand dollar lead abatement.
So, okay, thank you.
Just one more piece of context for folks who haven't been calling this for seven or eight years, this, before my time, even the town did an asset management plan for the water and sewer. And this is, I think, the third state, where we did water and we did both water and this were. Phase one and this is water phase two, so there's a phased plan with maintaining the assets that have been deferred. Over more than a hundred and, well, close to a hundred and twenty years now. So, some of the pipes are from nineteen oh five. Nineteen oh three, so anyway, so, so this is, this is part of an asset management plan that's been sort of seven, eight years. Along the way, and that, that plan is actually on the town website if anybody wants to go to sleep really quickly.
And, and we got fifty percent back on the, back, phase one and phase two effort.
Yeah, it was pretty close to sixty percent, actually, when we got all said and done, that was returned, so we passed two one point nine million dollar loans. And we spent about million, a little less than a million, combined on each one.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
You have to second.
Uh, she's second. Can we do show hands or we have to roll call? Alright, all in favor? Uh, again.
Do I get to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's an RSA that says no.
So I'll, I'll, I'll run through this, I read through it when Demi asked me, so the formation of the budget committees. If you have elected budget committee, they shall have an ex officio member from the select board. What you cannot be is an at large member, you cannot be elected to both the select board and the budget committee at the same time. John is an ex officio member from the select board, which is required by RSA.
Ex officio means you have voting rights, yes. That's in Robert's rules of order.
Yeah. I read it too. It's two different RSAs. So, again, all in favor? No abstentions or no denies? So unanimous passing. Alright.
Article seven, um, I make a motion to recommend article seven as printed.
Alright, discussion, back to Ed, explain article seven.
So article seven is the same SRF loan, but it's working a little bit different, um. We're looking to get a watershed management plan for Crystal Lake. Many of you may know, we worked with Lebanon to do the same thing through Lebanon side, they got a hundred thousand dollar grant for Maskoma Lake. Um, what DES does is it's pretty much a grant, a hundred percent grant for this. But it has to run through the SRF program, so we get a hundred percent loan. We do the work, once the work's complete, we get a hundred percent forgiveness on that loan, so. We have to do it, but it does have to run through town meeting as if it's loan authorization.
And, and what is the, can you say a little bit more about what actual purpose and the work is?
The purpose is to create a watershed management plan to, to look at ways that we can keep the water or clean. Not necessarily filter the water, but keep the water coming into Crystal Lake cleaner, do some projects, it'll identify projects. Um, with a hundred thousand dollars on Crystal Lake, since we're doing a Maskoma Lake, some of the work's being done, so that's gonna allow us to do some. Water testing and things that might not have been able to be done, so we should have a pretty solid management plan. Coming from a hundred thousand dollar grant for Crystal Lake.
Any questions? All in favor? Alright. Passes unanimously.
Article eight, um, and this is the budget, um, I make a motion to recommend article eight as printed.
Second.
Alright. Um, I would say discussion on article eight, but that will spend the whole meeting, do you need additional discussion beyond the discussion we've already had about article eight? Which is the appropriation of the nine point four six million. Alright, all in favor? Alright.
Hi.
Yeah, abstentions against, so that is. Eight one.
Article nine, I make a motion to recommend article nine as printed.
Um, article nine is our standard CIP funding article. Um, I don't think we need to do a whole lot of discussion, the amount of appropriated for article nine, CIP capital improvement reserve funding is not. Uh, five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars and change. Sorry, five seventy nine, um, any discussion needed on article nine?
I could use some clarity, I have to admit, I'm like, as familiar as this is, I probably should be, so where did this specific number come from?
So. So it's, it is a.
It was a nickel.
It's, it's essentially, um, it's an, so it goes up more than a nickel, but it increases by a small amount every year. And I believe this year the.
Twenty six thousand two hundred dollars.
It's twenty six thousand dollars more than last year.
The, the short version, it was what, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the town was in a position with no capital reserve funds. And significant need to purchase vehicles and repair roads and other capital improvements, so Lee Carrier and another, and a group. Got together, the budget committee, people who know more about this than I, but they put together a capital improvement program. Where it started at nickel on the tax rate, twenty six thousand and, and change a year, and every year it has gone up. That information, so the first year was twenty six thousand, the next was fifty two, and then it's gone up till now. And we've got a whole capital improvement plan with a capital improvement uh, committee, we run through it every year, looking out. At the five and ten year plan, to purchase, police cars, fire trucks, do major road repairs, uh, stuff like that. Um, initially, interest rates were super low, so they took out loans, the last few years, we've been spending cash. Uh, because they actually have cash now and we didn't then, um, so this is a continuation of a plan that's now at least fifteen years old and has worked really well.
I would also say we had a, a pretty decent discussion and study about, you know, do we start pulling that back? And that's about the time interest weight rates went from two to three percent to seven percent, and that's when we. Made the switch and said, you know what, we're gonna start paying cash right now. And with that, the balance has been coming down some, I think it's been a great financial plan, but we did. Decide at that point to, to continue putting the twenty six thousand dollar and to make sure that the fund stays stable.
Okay.
We, we used to debate greatly about every single. That was purchased in the town and they'd approve the budget, but boy, did they argue about the trucks. Some kind of equipment.
Not always such a bad thing to argue about equipment.
It's at least good to be informed of what the purchases are gonna be.
It's a committee, we review any capital expense over ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Demi, I, I'd add too, we had a very good example, um, the chief of police found a hybrid cruiser and. Anyone's been following automakers, uh, last year they made hybrids, we had a chance to go to twenty twenty five, get it earlier than planned. And also, um, get, get some significant discounts, so he was able to purchase that with cash, he can. Those lack words, so the savings from having that preplanning done, in addition to leveling the budget, really puts us at an advantage when we have an opportunity like that to stay. I don't know how many thought it was a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it was at least a few thousand dollars or a little bit more, just to be able to. To jump.
For something that we have to buy.
And it, it levels the tax rate.
That's the whole.
It doesn't do this to your tax rate with every single time you have a loan in your debt service.
Thank you, I had a little bit of information on this guy, he was curious as to the exact amount, how that was determined, now I get the nickel joke, so.
And having spoken, we've just appointed you to the capital reserve. And meeting starting in August, it's gonna catch you in that.
Any further discussion needed? Alright, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
Article ten, um, I would like to make a motion to recommend article ten as printed.
Second.
Ed, can you explain article ten please?
Yeah, this is kind of what we've been trying to do over the past couple of years, um. Depending on what we do on article eleven, the library building capital reserve fund should be emptied. We did spend the sidewalk construction capital reserve fund this year on the sidewalks downtown, so those two are empty and. Because we have a capital fund now, we recommend doing away with those two capital reserve items.
So article ten is purely get away with the two bucks.
How much was in the library cabinet?
That's the next, that's the next article.
Building fund was, I, I think it was two eighty eight that we voted to spend out of there when we passed the article. And then if you look at the next article with interest and stuff, there's seventy one thousand five twenty five left.
But I thought that went into, we said it was gonna go into, bring along the amount of the loan now.
No. It did, I mean, that was part of the project, but we, we authorized lower borrowing because there was two hundred and eighty eight thousand in cash to spend.
So it's actually going into the undesignedated fund?
No, it's going into the loan.
Oh, it's going into the loan?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That's what article.
It's the same thing like last year where one article is about getting rid of the funds and then the other article is about what to do with the funds.
Yeah, I can explain that on the next.
Cause it says it's being transferred to the mi- uh municipalities general fund, that's why.
Right, but then article.
Will go towards a loan.
That's article eleven.
That's article eleven.
No, um, article ten, it says that.
Article eleven fails, it's not.
Yes. So article ten is just housekeeping on funds.
Getting rid of.
Right. And, any further discussion?
And they currently have zero balance?
No, they don't, and that is the purpose of article eleven, what to do with the balance.
What is the balance?
Building reserve is seventy one thousand five twenty five, I don't have the balance of the sidewalk fund, but it's pretty much spent, it's down.
Seventy one thousand is the interest on the.
Yeah, when we passed the article in twenty twenty two, the two eighty eight or whatever is what we were told was in the fund. So since then, there's been some interest in things that have grown.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on article ten? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Article eleven, I make a motion to recommend article eleven as printed.
All second. I will first.
So this is the discussion, we did have this at the select board a few weeks ago, but. Because we didn't pull the funds right away, we waited a few years. And there was probably some interest in there by the time we voted at town meeting, there's seventy one thousand five twenty five available in the library reserve fund. After talking to the select board, we decided that the purpose of that money was to go towards the Whitney Hall project. So article eleven is to reallocate that seventy one thousand five twenty five to go towards the project. With the hopes of just making an extra principal payment or something.
Does that make sense?
Using, I feel like the way it's written.
Yeah, I was puzzled the way it was written too. Allocate it and then.
I think some of it's the way the state makes us.
Cause it says, no doubt, this will come.
The state forces, when we close a fund, you have to put it into your undesignedated fund and then we can use, spend that undesignedated fund as we choose.
Right.
Okay.
And so that's what's happening, so it's, it's really an accounting, it's a two step process mandated by the state. Where you, you close your fund, you close the capital reserve fund, you put the money in our undesignedated fund bank account and then we spend that money. As we want, which in this case is to pay down the loan.
Good.
And so the same thing happened last year. At the town meeting, and remember, everybody, we had to vote to amend the article to change the dollar amount because the dollar amount wasn't right, and so. It's the exact same process last year where we close our funds, the funds move here, now we agree, we're gonna spend the funds to do blah.
It's too bad there isn't a further explanation because I can see people at town meetings saying, wait a minute, what's going on here? We just did this project.
We can put that in the narrative section.
That would be great.
They're not allowed to put it in the warrant.
Right, no, I know.
Because if anything that goes for the practical is gonna shorten the length of the line, so it's good for people to know that and. You should feel a lot better.
And the library trustees put a lot of work into raising that money as well, so we should thank them all for that.
Yes, we should. Well, hopefully they have more.
Any, any further discussion required on article? Alright, all in favor? Passes unanimously. I believe that is it, because the other ones, we don't get to recommend.
My petition.
And you guys have done the select work in top, because I have to do it before.
I mean, but they did, didn't they?
No.
They voted on all those. Um, I think the one main thing that we need to talk about is the article twelve. It's petition article, we've always put them at the end, but the S P two vote has to be open for an hour, so we're recommending that we put that as article twelve. And then move into the exemptions, that way it'll have time to be open while we talk about the other stuff. If not, you can put it at. If not, you can put it at the end of the warrant, and then we'll just have to move it at town meeting, but.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a lag or I'd go back up.
Before the select board, what's, what's our pleasure regarding the positioning of SB two, which is on, printed here as article twelve? By precedent in the past, petition articles have always been last, but there's a good reason to move this one forward in this time, so.
Well, the timing makes sense, but, uh, and it'll also keep people there. Because you're generally, the last articles are, are very few people to go in.
And it is the only petition warrant article this year, so.
Do you want a motion, or do you want a consentals?
Uh, I would do a motion.
I'll make a motion to set the petition warrant article on SB two as article twelve.
All second that. There is the discussion.
Think it's a good idea.
Comments in the public, anyone have anything? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Wait, hold on, very quickly, this is Lindsay Smith. I just wanna make sure that, um, that's where it legally can be allowed, yes?
Yes, yes, mon- moneyed warrants articles have to go first, and those all, actually for the box first, and then. Moneyed articles is after all of this, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all, I was just making sure that, um, that, that we have them in the right order as far as moneyed, the ones that have to be first, so.
Yeah, they'll also be reviewed by legal and by D R A, so.
Sorry, guys, who seconded that motion?
But they'll look, all in favor, say aye.
Any other?
No, we vote, we only recommend moneyed articles.
No, do we, we had to, we didn't vote to put articles thirteen, fourteen, we have to vote to put them on, don't we? Is that the way we have them written, or no?
I don't believe so, but if you guys wanna make like a motion to present the warrant as written, we can, or. Maybe as written might not be the right thing, cause there's gonna be tweaks by D R A and like, but as proposed.
Alice is not able to attend this meeting.
Okay, I just was curious if we had to put them on.
Because we didn't talk about them, no, we didn't.
Well, we talked about them, but we didn't have the numbers.
Didn't initiate a vote last night.
But there's, but there's no recommendation of non-moneyed articles.
No, no, haven't in the past.
Nothing like that.
Okay, I'm happy with it, I.
We're just accepting it as part of the warrant articles.
Yeah, I'm happy with it, as long as you don't have to, I just wanna make sure.
Okay with that, Ed, you don't think we need to e- accept the entire one?
I don't think so, if you want to, it doesn't hurt to say we. We accept else than this as the one. Ending changes from D R A.
I guess the one I have to have any sort of special meeting or something.
Well, then, I've, I've seen a motion to accept the, um, article, the warrant as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-five town warrant as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Do we have anything left to do, or are we turning?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I'll second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
You don't actually have a vote on that.
Thank you.
Dimitri, that is a. Yeah, it really is.
Once you did it, right.
Did you say that was easy?